So, good morning and welcome. Welcome to our public hearing on the, as part of the consultation on harmonizing certain options and discretions in union law for less significant banks. We will start this morning with a short presentation and then we are, we are asking, we are answering your questions, so we're opening the floor to questions. So, but before we begin, let me introduce the speakers that we have here this morning. So to my, to my right, it's Yuka Vesala, Director General in DG Micro Potential Supervision III. And we have Roberto Reina, Deputy Director General Legal Services. In the middle, Esteban Meyer, Advisor in DG Micro Potential Supervision III. And on the far right, Giovanni Bassani, Senior Legal Counsel in Legal Services. So, without further ado, I think we start with a presentation and then we're looking forward to the questions you might have. Yuka.
Thank you very much, Rolf, and good morning also from my side. And welcome to this public hearing of the options and national discretions applied to the less significant institutions. As you know, we started the public consultation on the 3rd of November and now we have this public hearing and there are not so many today here, but I still hope that there is a very active participation and then also there will be active submission of comments during the consultation and we are here, here to respond to your questions. But I will, I will start with the presentation, which is quite brief. And first to recall, we have had the major project inside the SSM to harmonize those options and discretions that are to the supervisor to decide. We cannot obviously change the options that are for the national lawmakers to decide. And this we consider has been a major achievement already. We noticed when we started the SSM, especially in the comprehensive assessment, that the starting point is more heterogeneous than we could have maybe thought beforehand. And the exercise of these options and national discretions that are in the EU regulation differently by the national authorities resulted in big differences in the measurement of banks' capital ratios, mainly because of the fact that the definitions of own funds were different across the different countries. So we have counted the total of 128 options and discretions that have been subject to the disharmonization for, first of all, for significant institutions. And this project has been finalized and we consider that this has been already a major achievement and this has harmonized considerably the way that the capital regulation is applied and therefore also made the banks' capital ratios consistent across countries, which is also very much needed for, for the markets and the ability of, of markets to compare institutions from different countries. So the topic of our current project is to extend this harmonization of the application of the options and discretions to less significant institutions. And we consider that this is also very much needed because we should have the level playing field inside the banking sector, the basic rules, how capital ratios are calculated should be the same for big banks and the smaller banks. And also the other important prudential requirements relating to large exposures and liquidity and so on and so forth should be the same for, for, for all banks irrespective of the, of the size. And then we also have the general mandate in the SSM to ensure that there is a consistent application of high supervisory standards. This is our general mandate regarding LSIs. The SSM is responsible for the supervisory system as a whole, while the national authorities carry out the, the supervision on a daily basis of the less significant institutions. And we consider that these options and national discretions and the harmonization, how they are used is one important step towards this, this objective that we have. We have also other supervisory standards that have been issued already and this is part of this overall project to, to have a consistent and high supervisory standards also for the LSIs. And then the same objectives that I mentioned for the SIs, to have comparable capital ratios in the first place is also important for LSIs and we can also then foster integration by having comparability across all banks in the, in the markets. What is important here is, as in all work that we carry out regarding LSIs, that we apply the, the principle of proportionality. We should maybe say that we apply the practice of proportionality because we put the principle in practice. And this means that we are not taking the approach that has been agreed for the significant institutions directly to the LSIs, but we consider what is the appropriate approach and take into account the fact that the banks are smaller and there are many specificities in their business models. And we follow this approach also here. We conducted with the national authorities a thorough review of all these options, one by one, and then considered whether this should be applied as such to the LSIs or whether we should have a specific different approach. And this discussion was then based on this question about whether it's proportionate to apply the same approach or not. And then we then came up with this proposal, how to apply the, the harmonization of the O&amp;Ds for LSIs. And we have basically three categories of the options and national discretions that you will find in the documentation. We have first of all, the, the category of the options where the same approach was considered as appropriate for also LSIs. These are sort of basic hard rules for capital and liquidity, et cetera, where there's no reason to deviate from the same rules that should be applied by, by all banks. And we have here 50 options that fall into this category. Then we have the second category of the options and national discretions where we consider that we should have indeed the different approach, LSI-specific approach. And we have eight options in that category. And then we have the final third category where we consider that we don't need to at this stage anymore harmonize these options, either because there have been further developments or there are transitional arrangements that result in the expiration of these options or that there is further work that is needed. And we have 25 options in the category where the, the harmonization was not considered needed anymore and then 17 options that are waiting for further future developments. If I go a little bit more in detail and then I think it's best to leave this for the discussion, so I will not go through each of the options one by one, it would take quite a long time. But to give a little bit of flavor of the, of the different categories. So the first category where we apply the same approach as for the SIs and we have the 50 options, what I mentioned. Here we have indeed the sort of, if, if we can say hard rules, such as the definition of default, which is now based on the 90-day past due criterion, which should be also used for LSIs in order to have a uniform definition for default and also the non-performing loans. And then a second important rule that we have now considered for the LSIs as well is the phase in of the major elements in, in, in the CTI. For instance, deferred tax assets, so these deferred tax assets, DTAs, should be phased in from the capital base in the same way as in the case of SIs. So this is one example, one significant example where we consider that we should apply the same approach as for the SIs. And then one other example of this category, which is highly significant for LSIs, is the decision not to apply the possibility of asking banks to report for prudential purposes using IFRS. And the banks are still allowed to, to report under the national accounting rules. In Germany and Austria, for instance, the use of national accounting rules is very widespread and practically all of the LSIs are not reporting under IFRS. So we, we will not change this state of affairs in the, in the LSIs and not also in SIs or for SIs, but here then the treatment is, is equalized for SIs and LSIs. Then the second category of the O&amp;Ds where we have a specific LSI approach, these are not very many, these are eight, but this can be quite significant because they, these relate to issues where due to proportionality, it's not, not appropriate or relevant to ask the same approach as for the SIs. For instance, we are allowing the LSIs not to have a separate risk and audit committee of, of the board, but they can have only one committee that is combining these, these functions. So this is an example of the, this category of the options. And then there are also some options that relate to the fact that the direct supervisory responsibility for LSIs is still with the NCA's. So therefore we need to, to have coordination between ECB and NCA's, which is not present for significant institutions and this can result in a different application of the national option. And then finally, the category where we consider that we don't have to, at this stage, to have a harmonization to reach the objectives of the exercise, to have consistent supervision and the level playing field. We have first of all, the options which are subject to transitional arrangements ending And we consider that given the time that is needed to, to finalize the, the approach, it doesn't make sense to do it in this case because these options will expire at the end of next year in any case. So we leave those unharmonized. And then there are some cases where the EBA has progressed in providing harmonization and we don't have to include that into, or those options into our package. And then finally, what I mentioned already, we have 17 options that are waiting for further work inside the ECB or at the level of the, of the EBA. Regarding the, the legal implementation of this work, we have in the consultation two draft legal acts. First of all, we have a guideline which is a binding legal instrument according to the SSM regulation, which the ECB can use for the supervision of LSIs according to its mandate. And this is an instrument that then harmonizes the approach by the NCA's. And in this guideline, we have those options that represent the, the hard rules, what I, what I mentioned, or the other term that we use for these, these options are general rules that are applied to all banks. They are sort of regulatory options that are immediately then applicable to, to all institutions. And then we have a recommendation, which is another instrument at our disposal, which is non-binding to NCA's, but of course we expect that the NCA's are following the recommendations. And these recommendations also gives some flexibility to the NCA's, how to implement the approach while keeping the, the objective there of a common approach. And we use this instrument for those options that require the case-by-case assessment by the supervisors. So this is the logic behind the use of the, the two different legal instruments. And then finally, the, the timeline, we are here, 17 November, public hearing. And then we still continue with the consultation until 5th of January. So there is quite a lot of time for you to, to submit still comments after this hearing and other participants of the consultation. This is an open consultation. And then after the ending of the consultation, we will move forward to, to finalize the package, taking into account the, the comments that have been received. And we have further details on how to submit the comments, which can take place either by email or by traditional email. You have the further information in this website, what is mentioned here. So I will stop here and open the floor for your possible comments. I hope you will have many comments and questions and I have the colleagues here to, to respond to your, your questions. So please, the floor is yours.
Martin Sutaski with the German Savings Banks Association. Overall, I'd say we, we appreciate the ECB's efforts to, to O&amp;Ds and to, to also harmonize the, the exercise of O&amp;Ds with regard to the SIs and now to the LSIs. With regard to the LSI O&amp;Ds, we particularly support the, the draft on 76/3 CRD, the combination of the committees, which is a practice that is, that is often, often the case in, in German savings banks. And also with regard to 24/1, the affirmation that the ECB will not apply or, or request IFRS calculations from, from banks, from, from LSIs. Let me say as a minor suggestion for, perhaps for future endeavors, perhaps the ECB could consider to, to consult SI and LSI recommendations or rules in, in parallel to avoid having a situation where you are basically copying or applying the SI exercise with regard to the LSIs. So perhaps that might, might be something to, to consider for future consultations, depending on the topics, depending on whether it's appropriate or not. And then I have a question with regard to O&amp;Ds where the ECB decided to leave the, the exercise to the discretion of the NCA. For example, in the explanatory memorandum, we, we noticed that, for example, on, on Article 395/1 CRR, the, the large exposure limit for very, very small credit institutions -- to sort of have a higher visibility of the ECB's stance on this topic or, yeah, was it a deliberate decision or is there any, any other reason behind this? Thank you.
Okay. So thank you, Martin, very much and also for the, the support. The point you raised about the, the process to have the SIs and LSIs consulted at the same time, until now, we have been following in many of the, the topics, the sequence where we have first the discussion for the SIs in order to also to keep it more manageable and it has been, of course, the urgent task for the ECB to, to have a common approach for the supervision of the SIs that is conducted by the, by the joint supervisory teams. And we have a somewhat more relaxed timeline for the work on, on LSI supervision and we have been following this, this plan here as well and also in, in other major projects like the, the work on the LSI, LSI SREP where we have, have then a longer timeline currently until 2018 to have this common system implemented. And it also gives us the, the possibility to, to consider with some time the LSI-specific issues to, to, to be able to exercise the concept of proportionality and we need, need to then, then have this, this approach. So this is the, the, the way that we have been approaching the LSI issues and I think it has worked quite well until, until now. Of course, we take into account everything that has been said regarding the SIs when we then make the, make the consultation and the, the proposals regarding LSI issues. Regarding the large exposures, I think here the flexibility that was left to the NCA's relates, first of all, to the possibility to have a lower large exposure limit than 150 million because we have many very small LSIs and for them, if the total balance sheet is not much larger than 150 million, then the large exposure limit of 150 million doesn't make sense. So we need to have flexibility here because we have many LSIs that are quite small. So it's not, not so uncommon to have banks that, that have balance sheet less than 500 million or even, even, even significantly smaller than that. So we need to have flexibility here. But Esther or the others, if you have something more on this?
So, I mean, when we decided on which options to include in the different instruments, we, we always had a look in, to which extent in, in the O&amp;D guide or the regulation, there are further specifications for the assessment are provided and where there's really a policy guidance that should be also followed by the NCA's. And in the case of Article 395 and the large exposure limits for SIs, the ECB decided not to make use of its option for this option because it's just not relevant for the large institutions. But we did not, yeah, provide further guidance on how the, the NCA's should decide to make use of this possibility and therefore we did not include it in the package. But this is also why we mentioned it in the explanatory memorandum because it's rather important and should be noticed and clear to everyone that NCA's will have the possibility to make use of this option.
Italian Credit Cooperative Banks, thank you very much for this hearing and opportunity to, to interact with our supervisor. So I would like somehow to, to find a relationship between this initiative and others, mainly the ADIS file on the site, ADIS European Deposit Insurance Scheme. So my question is as following. Do you consider this ECB initiative as one of those intend to reduce risk in the banking union, trying to, to make more harmonization between less significant institution and significant institution so that the overall risk in the banking system may come more harmonized and so institution at the European level can go forward, for example, with ADIS file? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Certainly, the objective here is also to make sure that the bank's capitalization is strengthened and we have a adequately conservative approach to this exercise of the options. And in this regard, I think it's quite important that we harmonize the use of the transitional arrangements, what I mentioned about deferred tax assets, so that we have a same time now until 2019 for all banks in the SSM to face, out or should it be phased in, sorry, the, the DTAs from the, from the common equity tier one capital. And this is then strengthening also the quality of, of capital. So certainly we have this objective of risk reduction as well. The other objective that I emphasized at the level playing field, to have the same definitions, so that is of course also very important. We don't have inside this consultation anything that relates to deposit insurance. Deposit insurance is also not a task for the ECB or the SSM to, to supervise. We have however been working on the Article 113/7, which are the criteria in the CRR when an institutional protection scheme can be recognized, where the, where there is an arrangement to protect the solvency and cap, liquidity of the, of the member institutions. And we have already consulted and finalized the, the common approach to this IPS. This is not deposit insurance, but in some cases, the IPS arrangements, the IPS funds can also act as, as deposit, as deposit insurance funds. So the issues are closely related, but there our perspective is to harmonize the approach inside the SSM so that when there are new applications to have IPS, they are assessed according to the common criteria and then there can be these regulatory privileges inside the IPS and that we have consistent monitoring whether the IPS continuously meet the criteria that exist. And here the perspective is, is the protection of individual members against capital and so liquidity issues and not deposit insurance, but the issues, issues are linked. So I hope this clarifies the, the landscape vis-à-vis IPS and, and deposit insurance.
Sebastian Stodolka, European Savings and Retail Banking Group. Thank you very much for organizing this hearing, also from my end. You mentioned before that there are 17 O&amp;Ds that wait for further work and in this regard, you mentioned the ECB and the EBA. And my question -- And my question would be whether you also consider it necessary that adoptions or reforms are made at level one? So let's say that principal European decision-makers make some amendments, maybe in the upcoming reform of the CRR and CRD4. Would you appreciate that? Would you expect something in this regard? Thank you.
This question is a bit maybe difficult to answer directly. I mean, these options that we have been leaving for further work, they, of course, are options that are for the supervisor to decide, for the competent authority in the current regulation, and we are working in terms of the current regulation. And there are these 17 options where we don't have an approach in the SSM, not for significant, not for LSIs, and these options are then waiting for the further work. The options cover issues like liquidity waivers in terms of Pillar Two requirements, some issues regarding consolidation, then credit risk issues regarding the standardized approach and the IAB approach, some details there. Also, of course, then based on the current regulation and the options that are there regarding some of the details, and then also CVA adjustments and market risk. So these are, I would say, rather detailed issues that can be relevant for some institutions, but they are not major issues regarding the regulatory framework, Esther or others.
Some, I mean, these options that require follow-up, they were already mentioned also in the package for the significant institutions in the guide. I mean, for some of those, we're just waiting for cases to first get a feeling on how to assess these, the individual decisions and the applications. And others, for example, are also related to structural separation. So at the moment, it's too early to do anything on this topic, and as you already mentioned, there's also work of EBA going on, for example, related to the consolidation. So therefore, we need to wait.
Do you want to add anything else?
Perhaps yes. In terms of future amendments of the single rulebook, as you also mentioned, the possibility to, or what we would like to see in the future package to be presented by the Commission, well, of course, for us, more harmonization would be better, for sure, because it would make our life easier, in the sense that we don't have to apply 19 different national legislation, but just one coming from the regulation, so this would be also welcome. And as regards completely the case of O&amp;Ds, for us, it's important to, whenever O&amp;Ds are recognized, to have the possibility for the competent authorities to exercise these O&amp;Ds, because this also gives us the possibility to harmonize, at least within the SSM, the practice that has been followed so far by competent authorities.
That doesn't seem to be the case. So we answered everything that you wanted to know. We thank you all for coming, and have a safe trip home.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to the comments during, further comments during the consultation. Thank you very much.
I have to say the comments from the, no, from the webcast.